And we'll get. Here we go. It is 7:01 PM. Thank you all for joining us at tonight's meeting. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Texas Opens Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisition, real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be complete in view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for this public, or for the public to view, at least 72 hours before the meeting. And with that, I will ask Mr. Van Wolf to please pray for us this evening.
Sure thing. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather together tonight, Lord. We are grateful for this opportunity to meet, Lord, and Lord, we ask that you provide wisdom and a sermon for the board as we make decisions that impact the district. Lord, we ask that you be with those traveling and as they forego their summer activities, Lord, and we ask that you be with our students and our staff as we prepare for another successful school year and the days ahead. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Go please stand up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And then, do we have the new board vision language to throw up? Here we go. Ms. Dixon, if you would, please?
Yes, absolutely. The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Thank you very much for that. Mr. Dial, I know that is something that you did on the Education Foundation, which you all always read, y'all's mission statement at the beginning of every meeting. I very much enjoyed that. And that's how we're going to open up our meetings from now on, is we will pray, we will honor our country with the pledge, and then we will read the board vision statement, as I believe it will frame the meeting that we will have this evening. So with that being said, we have some celebrations at this point.
Yes, we do. And actually, before we get started in all of our student celebrations, I want to thank the board for honoring National Holiday, Juneteenth today, because we do have students and staff that are working through summer school and summer activities. So I just want to say thank you for allowing this day to be honored so that all of our individuals working for us could have the day. Okay, yes. So, great celebrations, and we have a lot, which is outstanding. So, you may or may not be aware, but we have esports in Prosper ISD. And gaming is no longer just a favorite pastime, as we mentioned at our home, and some of our parents may be going, "Why aren't you always on those games?" I'm going to tell you why this is an okay, quick meditation, just over there. In Prosper ISD, our students are dominating at state, national level in the new extracurricular activity esports. Students hold practices throughout the year and compete at various tournaments to earn top gamer or top team. So, our PHS esports awards. So, our varsity Rocket League competition, this is Texas SEF, undisputed state champion and Intel-inspired national champion runner-up, Aiden Kirby. Please take a. Isaiah Spanler. Are you ready for my? I love the new ground. I was going to make a joke, it's for home gaming, but then I said it was for the game. So, congratulations, guys. So, this was, y'all may have seen this picture in some of our publications, and I believe it was one of y'all that was holding up, and it looked like it was huge, right? It was a big moment. And so, that was a really cool picture. So, we want to make sure that we honor y'all and all of the time and effort that you have put in, and getting Prosper ISD's name out there, specifically Prosper High School, because I know a lot of ours have gone into this. And I'd like to invite Jeremy Kincaid up also. Jeremy is their coach, so there's some training in Austin, so I'm good. Okay, very good, thanks. And so, we'll have you up in just about a minute. Picture time. So, go to the back. There you go, perfect. Congratulations, guys.
Nice job.
We have a physical award that were also received by this great team, and that was HSEL South Fall Championship, and that's Texas to Georgia, third place. Correct me if I'm saying any of this incorrectly. HSEL State Championship, first place. HSEL South Spring Championships, Texas to Georgia, third place. So, congratulations. PHS Super Smash Brothers Ultimate Competition, Vanta State, it's real. Vanta State Championship runner-up, and that goes to Chanika Inzwell. Okay, some more. PHS esports, and we had PHS Valorant, Valorant Competition, HSEL State Championship, third place, Aiden Hahn. Harrison Washburn. Aiden Hahn. And Lucas Pang. And again, the esports supervisor, advisor, actually, I guess he was supervising y'all too, was Mr. Kincaid, who lives in Austin. So, congratulations. Okay, now, on Rock Hill High School esports, Valorant Competition Champions at the Rise to, oh, you're going to rag him wrong. Rag him wrong. Okay, all right. Valhalla Esports League National Tournament and on the Texas Esports Championships, and we have Vince Aparias. Aiden Scott. Psycho Watch. Psycho Watch, too? Cal Cruz. Marie Hyen. Lucas Hoffman. Good? Congratulations. We also have Rock Hill High School Super Smash Brothers Ultimate Competition, state champion, runner-up, and SBIM invitation, national champion, Ryan Smith. You guys can do this, Ryan's game.
There it is, there it is.
Yes, I knew the joke was coming. Apex varsity champions at the Apex Grand Chance Competition, Jackson Hampton. Taylor Jensen. Seth Lofton. And Garrett Sylvestry. Right, big time. It's just you and me. Okay, Rock Hill High School Open March 2 Competition, Vanta Texas Esports Championship runner-up, Austin Gullen, Lucas Hoffman. Lucas, move back up, Alfred, Alex Hien. Jessica Swat. And you all. Okay, Austin, stay with me. The rest, please. Okay, so, Rock Hill High School Rocket League Competition, Rise to Ragnarok, say it. Valhalla Esports League National Tournament, third place, Austin Gillan. Nicholas Anderson. Stacy Gah. And the wonderful Maddy Robinson is their coach and super expert advisor. Come on up. If you were Rock Hill High School, any of the esports, that you'll come back so we can do a whole big group photo right after this one. Okay, so, all Rock Hill, and then I'll do PHS, and have everybody back up. So, if you're a Rock Hill, you came up here at any point in time to get an award, come back up. And Ms. Robinson, just for our community and then all of our visitors tonight, those that are online and in person, about how many hours do you all spend just ballpark? Because this is all new to the community.
Coaching, coordinating, and all of that. Coach Kincaid and I both had over 200 hours, about 204 hours for the year, coordinating, well, 70 on Rock Hill's campus and then 60, I believe, at PHS. It's been awesome.
Well, we really appreciate everything that you and Mr. Kincaid have done, and this is in addition to your already busy teaching schedule to give back to our students, and obviously, they were highly, highly successful. So, thank you.
That's where it's like four steps that way.
They want that, like, control. Very good. And then our PHS, you'll come back. If you were PHS esports. And I believe, I'm almost certain, I believe, and Ms. Robinson, you can correct me, is that the Prosper Education Foundation, I think, sponsored Jersey and, or esports, didn't they? I think they put in a grant, I think Mr. Kincaid did.
They did at Rock Hill, wasn't it?
Yeah. So, just want to give Prosper Education Foundation a shout-out. Once again, showing up to support our kids. Yeah, moving on to Track and Build. And I promise esports, I'm going to get better knowing all of the different competitions. Track and Build's been around a lot longer, so I probably will not go through the events. I do apologize for that, but I promise to incorporate. Okay, so, Track and Build, Skylin Townsend from Rock Hill High School. Skylin was not only the long jump state champion, but she was also the triple jump state champion.
Yeah.
PR. Okay, so, triple jump, please. Forty-one. I used to triple jump. Do you want to do it together right now? I think you would beat me. I mean, it's not absurd. And Coach Morgan. And Coach Morgan, I'm here, say, oh, there you are, come on up, Coach Morgan, you can do it, that great coach.
Great job.
We have Ms. Morgan Lewis back with us from Prosper High School, come on up, Morgan. She wore her name so you could know she was coming. 400 meter dash state champion, how fast did you run it?
Uh, there, I ran it 51 seconds.
But PR is 51.38. There it goes. Alright, so, that's incredible, so that's less than 60 seconds for everyone, one lap around and most boys, right? So they're in kind of the high 40s, right? Mid of the high 40s that they're running seconds and you're at 51 seconds. So she is flying. And where are you headed to? Because Mr. Jones would want me to say this quick. Stacy Goff. And all the X try. And then she is also the state champion in the 200 meter dash and how fast did you run the 200?
I ran that at 103.40. I think I almost said we went 4. I think they're both like 4. Like they did walk 4 and I think they walked 5.
Incredible. If you've ever watched Morgan run, it's like gut-wrenching, the 400, gut-wrenching, like it's a painful, just all-out sprint. She looks like she's just finishing up a jog. Right, it's like no big deal, not even breathing hard, other kids are falling out on the track and it's like, yep, I'm done. So congratulations, very good. And Coach Chris, if you'll come up, it's 7:40, she's not here with us. Coach Chris would want you to come up also.
Awesome.
We also have Taylor Watson from Prosper High School, who is the long jump state runner-up. Chris, can you come up? We'll call you state champion? Okay, alright. Just asking. Alright, congratulations to all of our Track and Build athletes, very proud of you. And Morgan, can't wait to see what you do. Okay, so now on to state spelling and vocabulary and we have a repeat visitor who's been here multiple times for her spelling, not only at the state level, but also at the national level and that's Nasa Moog. I think the first time we saw Nasa on the scene in Prosper ISD was 7th grade, right?
Reynolds.
That's, and Nasa is spelling and vocabulary state runner-up and where are you heading to school?
Yoces.
Morgan, that one's for you. And for Nasa, congratulations. And Sidney Hay is the coach. I don't think she's here, she's probably studying. You know, coaches have to study too, so congratulations, Nasa. Yes, there's more. Association of Texas Photography Instructors Top Video Program Contest. The top video program contest requires schools to submit two videos of four different categories to illustrate the strength of the video program at the campus. When the points were tallied, Rock Hill High School and Prosper High School were tied for first place. The great thing for Prosper ISD, that Rock Hill High School and Prosper High School not happy because they weren't first, one of them had to be. And for the tiebreaker, the ATPI took the eight entries from each school and had a new judge review all 16 videos to select the top school. And the winner was, Rock Hill High School was awarded the top video program and PHS was second place, not too bad for Prosper ISD, that's a good deal. So, top video program champion, Rock Hill High School News Package, first place, and Sports Package, second place, Brandon McBay. Congratulations, does it feel good to be PHS?
Yeah.
Feature Package, second place, Holman Libber. Congratulations. Documentary, first place is Tyler Stewart. When you wear your shirt to the rep.
Awesome.
Go ahead and stay with me for just a minute, Tyler, we're gonna have all of our Rock Hill High School award winners to come back and I would like Mr. Russ Olson and Ms. Marjorie Rayford. Marjorie's not here. Okay, so Mr. Olson is, I saw him.
Sorry, Mr. Logan.
They're gonna get their song.
Not this time though.
Okay, I've encouraged this and I apologize. Congratulations. And again, what a great day for Prosper ISD that our top schools are both of our high schools in this competition. So the top video program runner-up, PHS, Feature Package, first place is Christina Fresnova. Allison Wood. And Holman Meyer. So, but you're here and so we're gonna get a picture and then you're gonna stay, it's like that's our thanks to Sam. Okay, stay put. Sports Package, second place, Holman Meyer.
Great job.
But just kind of stand there in the wings before I have everybody come back to Mr. Hatch. Dramatic Short Film, second place, Giovanni Scampannato. Michael Soller. Lena Hamilton. This is not the first time we have seen this great group, this is the second time that y'all come to support leading for a win, so congratulations. Okay, and don't sit tight too, if you want to join them over there. Just we'll come back for a whole group picture. Documentary, second place is Zach Leekis. Mr. Logan and Mr. Hatch, please come join us. Great job. All kidding aside, all jokes aside, could not be more proud of each and every one of our students and I want to thank the parents. I know that it's a lot of time and effort behind the scenes and probably a lot of frustration at times, trying to get them to practice or to get them to study or to work on the film, whatever it may be, so I just want to say thank you so much and congratulations to each and every one of our students. We continue to be an elite standout in the state of Texas because of our incredible students and staff, so thank you so much.
Alright guys, again, congratulations, we will now take a brief intermission, just a couple minutes. Everybody is welcome to stay, we're going to talk about the budget and some other really fun things, but Dr. Penn likes that, but students, if you and your families would like to go, this would be a great time too. But again, congratulations, thank y'all for representing PISD extremely well.
Hey, Nasa. Hey, your return. Congratulations. Stay in touch too, okay? I don't know when I bring you back and you're like, you know, the president of UT or something, I'll not make a school after you. No.
See that's still here, I think that the AC is going to start working a little quicker, we lost a few people, so that'll be nice.
Talk about that with Long Range.
Exactly, exactly.
Need.
Okay, now back in session, we will go straight into the informational reports that we have for this evening.
Okay, so we'll have Dr. Penn come up, he's gonna do a quarterly finance update for us.
Alright, good evening, tonight we're going to look through our quarter ended May 31st for the year. So, starting out, we're going to go through our portfolio by funds, when we compare, we have last year up on the left, as always. The biggest difference when comparing is obviously in our bond funds, which fund the construction of our buildings, so this is, the reason for this is when we sold bonds in February, received that money in March, and so that's really, that one's gonna always fluctuate substantially depending on when our most recent bond sale was. And then, our general fund, which consists of all of the money in our general fund for the year-to-date, as well as our fund balance, is at 100 and, almost 189 million, bringing our total portfolio to 604 million. One of the things that we'll talk about some of our sessions later is just the interest rates going up, so when we see in the bottom right, those 4 and 5% numbers, this time last year we were under a percent, and so that's really benefited us a lot in our revenue and our general fund, which we'll talk about in a minute, but also will impact our discussion later on the budget planning for next year. So that's a, that's a huge win for us. As we go into our general fund, this is all of our 100 series fund, which is our general fund, but also some other local funds we have broke out, like athletics and natatorium. So our taxes are all, just about basically all in for the year, we've exceeded that anticipation, one of those is because of all of the protests that we have, so I'll show in a minute where our tax revenue is up about 6 or 7 million from what our initial budget was, and the state is going to reduce our state payment corresponding to that amount, so as those protests have settled and our levy has continued to go up, then the state will reduce the funding accordingly, so, but that will help us on our debt service as well. The other local sources, that second line, you can see that's performed well, that difference is related to those increase in interest rates, when we budgeted last year, we didn't have any clue what could happen to that, so we were very conservative and then we're on track to probably get around 7 million in interest this year, so that's been a big, big help to us. And then the state number, it is actually a little over where we'll land, because it will be reduced about 6 or 7 million corresponding to the tax and that should land at about 95 million when the state side, when that is all done. Next month we'll bring amendment that will kind of settle up all of our food service, debt service and this based on where our final numbers landed. On the expense side, 77% on our payroll side, so that's, that's under from where we would need it to be, so we'll have some savings on the expense side as well, with 74% of our expenses being in. This is the third quarter for us, so our quarter will run through the end of August, so this is the end of the third quarter on our school fiscal year. Athletic Fund has got a million in revenue, so this is primarily our gate money, but we also have moved summer camps to run through this too, just felt that was a better way of tracking that, we did that at the tail end of last year, so, but so our summer camps, so that, any activity we have through the summer will primarily be related to that and some early season games in August. And then expenditures at 523,000, so those, those activities are funding themselves, so the expenses really are game workers and the, and then the officials, those are the primary costs associated with putting on the events. Food service, food service has done well, as, you know, we've really seen kind of a return to normal year on food service finally, and so our revenues are at 10, 10 million and 9.4 on the expense side, so surplus of 650,000, which is what we need, just, just a little bit of growth in our fund balance every year, but that's about it, because we want to make sure that we're charging the rate, as high of a rate as we need to break even and cover it, but not to charging where we need more than that, we don't want a large surplus in food service, just enough to take care of the program, buy the food, pay the workers, but also replace equipment, because all of the equipment in our food service program is funded out of our food service budget. This one will not see much activity through the summer, as it is driven by meal rate, is where our costs are associated. And then the debt service fund, so again on this one, we can see that the taxes have exceeded the levy, this one we'll get to keep because it's not offset by anything with the state, the state actually gives no funding towards facilities, it's 100% funded from our local tax base, and so with that increase in levy, we will see additional, we'll also bring an amendment for this one next month, because when we, we sold that additional bond sale in February, that was not accounted for when we adopted this budget, to allow us to accelerate some projects, and so we'll bring, that will increase the debt side just a little bit too, but we should still basically about break even on the debt service side this year. So that, that will be our August payment, so that just kind of sits there, we pay February and August every year, so. Alright, and then we'll look through our construction projects, so, Lilliani, you can see the construction contract is about complete, as it is getting ready to open this year, just a little under 2 million remaining and about 94% of the total expenses covered. Christie is tracking just a little bit further behind on the construction, so you would anticipate that on the financials as well, but still expected to open this fall, still on track for that, and about 8.4 still outstanding on that building contract, but we know all of those are all hands on deck, getting that one ready to open. Early Childhood Calhoun, 4.8 outstanding on that contract, but it is also nearing completion as we prepare to welcome lots of 3 and 4-year-olds this August at Calhoun. Jones Middle School, this one is early in stage, it will not open for another, another full year, as you know, and so we are at about 22% into that project as it continues to progress. And then Walnut Grove, as it continues to get ready to open this fall as well, about 85% of that expense from that contract. That concludes the third quarter financials and welcome any questions on any of that.
Any questions from anyone? Penn?
Might as well stay there.
Yeah, exactly. We are now going to go to the next preliminary budget report for 22, or excuse me, 23, 24.
Alright, I love this stuff y'all, these are like my favorite times. Alright, so kicking off, this is the first public All right, so kicking off, this is the first public presentation for our budget. We've looked at this some in Finance Committee, I believe, early on. I can't remember. I've had so many conversations of it, because this is something that starts, you know, really in November and January, is we have early conversations on staffing, and it's such a collaborative work. We've got half our business department back there representing tonight. This is a huge, just, project of love from many people in our HR and business department, can't, can't share enough what we're going to cover in about a dozen slides, is months and months of work, and I just can't stress that enough. But, we'll start out and look through kind of school finance as a whole, just really quickly, look at some revenue and expenses, really just the highlights behind it, and really this first look at it. And then each month going forward, we'll get a little more granular. So, two slides that I have at the start, this really reiterate how our general fund works. And I think this is so important, because of, probably the most common misconception with school finances, if we have a high tax base and high property taxes, that the school itself on the general fund is getting more money, and that's absolutely just not the case. So we're what's called formula-funded, so it's looking at the kids that are in attendance and the types of programs they're in. And so, we have a basic allotment, which is a per-kid amount, and then we get extra funding for, if they're in career in technology, if they're identified as special education, if they're identified at early education, if compensatory education, so lower socioeconomic, all of these different things add on weights, and that is the bucket of the money that we get. Now, we don't know what that's going to be next year, right? We are working to project what that's going to be, based off of work with our demographers and historical trends in all of these programs. But ultimately, that's what we'll be, we'll be funded on. From there, the state fills, we fill it with taxes, and so that's kind of the water going in, that's our tax base. If we fill the bucket all the way, the state doesn't give us money. That's just, we've just funded ourself. If we don't, then the state gives us a little bit on top. In Prosper, we primarily fund ourselves. The vast majority of our funding comes from the local tax, so the state gives very little. But if that bucket were to overflow, that goes back to the state in a process called excess local revenue, is their current term for it. You may have heard it called recapture or Robin Hood, but that's the process, and that will also impact some of the later slides. Another slide showing that same, same idea, just differently, is that as one, the local share, our tax base goes up, the state share decreases. We are not getting more, it is just funded differently. So I want to always start with that. As we start out on our tax rate, another recurring theme tonight will be the legislative session that's still ongoing. So right now, the best we can do is work off of what the current law is, although I anticipate some changes in special sessions impacting us next year. So, I've got a couple of asterisks down there, just to cover myself. So up till 2019, we were $1.67, had been that rate for quite some time, and then we started, the state started tax compression process. And so, in the green is our current tax year, and there's three different parts of the tax rate. And anybody that would love to visit with us more, I'd be glad to spend time with you. It's, it's thrilling. But, the top number is the part that's the MCR, the maximum compressed rate that we receive from TEA, and that is the part of the tax rate that's been compressed, and the other two pieces just sort of fall down on top of it. So, right now, we're looking at a compression of about eight cents. That potentially could increase, depending on what happens at the state level, probably not by much, but maybe another cent or so, depending on what they do. We don't know. They're playing, they're working with lots of tax relief mechanisms, either capping the percentage growth, increasing the homestead exemption, or compressing the tax rate over here. So there's three different ways that they go about doing that. But, so right now, our tax rate would look at something like $1.36, about an eight-cent decrease currently. So, we'll know more about that, but again, that comes from TEA, actually. We will, everything I bring will actually be set by someone else, we just accept it. So as we look into the highlights of the revenue this year, so anticipating a growth of about 2,600 students or more, and then increased interest rates, again, that was a number that we had very low last year, that's going to turn out to be about 7 million for us this year. So that makes a tremendous difference on our budget, and so we're accounting for that. And then, one highlight I put in there is, one of our large allotments from the state is what's referred to as the fast-growth allotment, but it is capped. What the state puts in the bucket is not enough to fund the state, so we're reduced. So while we still get a lot of money, our formula that I was talking about would actually entitle us to another 6 million. That was included in some of the, in the main school finance bill that followed that, that died, was fully funding that, and that would be a huge benefit to us. That, with all the other school finance legislation died in this last session, but it had a lot of traction. I think everybody was on board to do that. It was not a controversial thing to do. So I'm, I shouldn't say optimistic, but wishful that that would be done when they go into special session, because that is one that, we're the second highest receiver in the state of that, only behind KDISD, which we're just barely behind them, they're multiple times our size. So, I have that there, that although, yes, we do get some funding, it's not near what the formula would entitle us to. And then a look at what the original budget was, so not the amended budget that we're currently in, but the original budget that you adopted in August last year, compared to what we're looking at tonight, and then the difference between those two. And so I'll just walk through those briefly. The miscellaneous revenue, that's interest, that's really what that is. I'm just boosting what we adopted in interest last year, since we were so conservative on that. And then tax revenue and state revenue, the two of those is really the relationship between picking up student growth. And then also, there's a piece, we've talked about some in the past, called TRS on behalf. It's the state's portion of our employees' retirement. So it's actually, we don't ever see that money, but it is a flow-through accounting, accounting activity we perform, which I think will, this year will probably be in the ballpark of about 15 million of that. So really, a lot of the state increase is usually tied to that accounting entry for their portion of our employees' retirement. So, that local tax and state revenue, the amount we're entitled to is going up per kids, but the tax revenue amount is going up from the levy, if I'm explaining that well. And then the federal revenues, that's not grants, but there's things like SHARs, E-Rate, and then, so SHARs is a kind of Medicaid reimbursable program, E-Rate is a technology reimbursable, and then indirect cost, which is a portion of federal grants, all very minimal amounts, which is, but that's what that federal revenue refers to. And so that would bring our current, but, revenue projections next year to 295 million. When we look in the expense side, we're going to break that into two large buckets. So we talk about personnel a lot, being the largest expense we have. This year, I think it's running about 83%, but it's always in the low, low 80s. So, since we adopted the budget last year in August, so this is people that we brought on through the year, and then positions we've added for next year, combination of those two, because we do bring in a number of positions through the year, 454 staff members. So that is, that is a lot more people than we had just about a year ago, since that adoption. That increases with, partnered with the, the raise that the board has approved, that's a $38 million increase on our expense side from where we were a year ago. Just as a note there, our average employee has a cost of about 75,000. So, we do have the 57.5 in salary, but there's also a number of associated costs that come with those employees. And the focus that we had this year, working closely with Ms. Hunt in the HR department, Mr. McLaughlin, and just a lot of help from them, was really refining some of our staffing ratios, especially as we opened up a new high school, and as we open up schools, really trying to tie some numbers, just some formulas to help us make sure we're staying consistent. So that was a really big emphasis for us this year, and really pleased with the work that's been done on that front. And then on the non-personnel side, the two biggest things is, you know, we've continued with inflation we had last year, obviously, definitely that's hitting us everywhere. Every software, every widget, anything that we buy is more than it was a year ago, but also growth due, due to opening the campuses. So, our costs to really set up the campus, a lot of that comes from our bond funds, but there's also a lot of these types of costs that come with running it. So, specifically, if you think of property insurance and utilities, that go to adding four more buildings than we had a year ago, those, those costs, but also, you know, the fine arts and athletics programs and CTE, custodial contracts, there's just a lot of these things that you may not think about being associated with, with opening a new campus. So, we've got those. And then, current law, what actually, we had been out of the recapture payment world for a little bit. This year, we're going to probably end up paying the way it's looking like it's settling with our kids, probably about 250,000, but you'll see if, as is right now, our recapture payment next year being about two and a half million. It is a relationship of your tax base and your kids, so it can kind of move through the year, but right now, that's about where it would be. So it's kind of our first big jump back into that. Legislation could change that. If they change the way some of the compression and tax rates and values work, then that may go away. But as right now, that's where we'd be looking at for recapture next year. And then one other item that we've probably talked about off and on, but the ESER funding, the COVID funding, there's, there are different types of it. Some districts still have a kind that still has another year, but ours is running out. So we have finished that out. So anything that we were buying that was a recurring cost, which was why we were very hesitant to, to put a lot in recurring cost, is going to come back to the general fund. And you'll see a lot of districts, you may see some things in the news in the coming year or two, if, if they had not, depending on how they structured it, how they chose to use their money. We, with our growth, have been able to kind of navigate that a little bit, but anybody that's paid with, that has been paid with that for the past year, all of them will come back over to our general fund. And then we've also been doing a lot of summer school. We really scaled up our summer school program using the ESER funds, and now that that's running out, we, we'd like to maintain that same level, because we know that the students need it, but those funds are coming back to the general fund. So those are some, some highlights of the non, although the last one is a little bit personnel, too, I guess, but.
Just a question, Dr. Penn, just for clarification, on the ESER funds, we put the majority of that funding into personnel, interventionist, supports, nursing aides, things like that, that were actually going to be people that we potentially needed for the future. So I don't want the community or the board to think that we were buying widgets.
No, no. You know, the, I thought, I liked, well, obviously, I'm going to tell you I like the way we did it, but I liked the way we did it, and that it was kind of a multi-pronged, it wasn't all-in, because you couldn't go all-in with recurring costs, because it's not sustainable. But you didn't want to just buy a bunch of stuff, either. And so, we used a lot, even things like our air filters, air filters for buildings, things that you can kind of need anyway, although you might could get some extra heavy-duty whatever through, through the COVID program. And then part-time people that were retirees, you know, hourly RTI or interventionist campuses, it's kind of a, a lot of those were retirees that could easily come on board, and then when we're done, step back out, and it wasn't a huge loss. And then, some staff, the ones that we're mentioning here, that would come back to the general fund. So we had kind of a multi-level approach, which I thought handled it well, to, to use it where we needed it, but also to ensure sustainability once the funds right now.
It was a great recruiting mechanism, actually. So, if a benefit or a positive had to come out of that, we hired a lot of staff that were interventionist or part-time, and then they made the decision because they loved our principals and staff and kids so much, they were like, I'll take a full-time job. So it, it worked in our favor.
All right, and so, so with those thoughts in mind, with the additional employees and those, just additional things we're talking about, that would, you'll see kind of from the adopted budget on the left, the increases in personnel and non-personnel, and, which is a $46 million increase from last year's budget, to our current preliminary budget number of 305 million for next year on the expense side. And so then, when we look through the revenue and expenses together, that would be an adopted $10 million deficit. One thing I want to talk about, and we spend a lot of time on this in Finance Committee, but anytime that we bring something in here, it is always what I hope to be the worst-case scenario. We have, just for a couple years, for the past three years, the board has adopted deficits between 8 to 13.9 million, and then every year has performed better than budget by 20 million or so, which is, is a lot on one hand, but it's also, if you think about outperforming your revenues by about 5%, and underspending by about 5%, at least on current year numbers, which are both pretty reasonable and conservative, we would, that's kind of what we'll put back, and I think that's what we're on track to do again this year. Another note, due to some requirements, with our budget, as you can see, growing approximately 40 million or more annually, to keep the relationship to the fund balance that we have, we would need to put back 10 to 20 every year, just to really maintain the relationship that we already have. And what I mean by that is, currently, our fund balance would support about six months of our expenses. A minimum is three months, and so really, to put back 10, 10 would be kind of the equivalent of that three-month amount, but 20 would kind of be at about that six-month, which we've been kind of striving to maintain. That gives us a lot of flexibility as we grow, so that when we need to open four campuses in a year, we can take on a deficit if we need to. And then, future, in the future, if there are cuts from the state, which obviously, I mean, the fact that we have 32 billion and aren't seeing an increase is a little disheartening in itself, but if we were to ever see cuts, we would be able to withstand some of that until the next biennium. So, I think really, I don't think getting above six by a lot would really be beneficial, but I think it's a good target for us to maintain. So, the reason I share that is this is really in line with what we've been adopting, and then every year for the past few years. And it, it can change what happens, right? We've had years where COVID hit and we saved on the expense side. We've had years where fast-growth allotment changed to the better on a revenue side. This year, one of the big things is interest, that's really been our big change on the revenue side for us this year. And then, we do have some built-in safeguards on the expense side, too. So as we add positions through the year, or things come up, we are able to weather those storms. And if you talk to anybody that's done this long enough, they'll tell you, there'll be a year where the kids don't show up. They won't stop coming, but we might not get 2,600. And so I think we handle this well. I think the way we navigate this, from keeping our deficit at a way that we, is manageable, and to where if it were to come to fruition, we would manage it fine, but also to show that we've really outperformed that every year. And so, I share that, just to go.
So did I hear you say we need to call our legislators?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
That's what I thought I heard.
So, yeah, absolutely. So they, they still have, they still have $32 billion, and they're still in special session, so the expectation is they'll go back likely in, in the fall, maybe, once everybody goes back to work, I'm not sure. But they have the money, they have the money to do some things, and, and we know we need it. We haven't seen an increase in the basic allotment since 2019, and there's nothing that costs the same as it did in 2019.
Just for the community, too, basic allotment to educate a student in the state of Texas is $6,160. Not every student is that dollar amount, and Prosper ISD does an exceptional job of pouring in instructionally to make sure that our kids get an elite and premier education in this district, and that's thanks to our local community.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. So I would highly encourage any of those that are interested to, and even if you're not interested, do it anyway. We need it, you know? We're just, we need, everything is costing more, and the only gains we see on the revenue side is, is when we grow kids, but when we grow kids, we're opening buildings. So we have all the staffing that comes with it, all those associated other costs. So, really, the only way we'll see an increase is in addition to that formula number we talked earlier about. So, yes, would love to see some adjustments made before this, they, they will reconvene, they will come back, they will talk school finance. It's just a matter of, of what they choose to do with that, so. And then next steps and important dates, so this is just kind of walking through the next few months look like. You know, we'll continue to look at our staffing vacancies, enrollment numbers, double-checking costs. Sometimes we get updated costs of what things will be, and double and triple and quadruple checking all of our, our lines, and then really looking at this ongoing legislative session. So, every other year, it impacts this process a lot. That's why some years we can do things a lot sooner than others, because we, we really hinge on what happens there. In our July board meeting, we'll go down to that function level, which is kind of that next level down by instruction, and so we'll be able to see where those positions have fallen, where some of those extra costs, and we'll explain kind of what those differences were. And we'll also do the debt service, which is paying for our bonds, and food service projections. So we'll bring all that in July. July 25th is an important date, because we'll, by then, we'll get our certified values from the appraisal districts. It used to be a lot more important, because it used to mean a lot more than it does now. It will help drive our compressed rate, but just for your knowledge, both those appraisal districts had, I think it was over like 100,000 protests, both of them individually on their own. So, and, most of us is in Collin, but we do have a portion of Denton County, and they, so they have to work those protests, which is why we saw that big shift in the levy this year, because there's so much, when they give us that certified value, there's still a lot of things that haven't been settled. So as they settle that, it will go up. But, that is what drives our tax collections and state aid and our maximum compressed rate that TA will eventually issue us. So we'll have that, and then, and the end of August, we'll have an August 20th board meeting, which will adopt the budget and the tax rate. We'll do a hearing, where I'll go through a presentation, and we'll adopt all of that. So, and then also have, just that we look to those other years of the opening of campuses. We are always looking at, when we're picking, how many people we can take on this year versus next year versus next year, very, we, we just don't live in a one-year world. It's always the year we're wrapping up, but then really two and three years out, because we need to know what those big expenses are, and when they're coming, and how can we weather, weather that, especially without increases in funding. So, because if we bring on more staff than we really should in terms of tying to students one year, then we kind of almost need to catch up the next year. So we, we really look at all of these things, kind of in a group of, usually about three years at a time is the way I usually work through it with Dr. Ferguson and the Finance Committee. With that being said, that's the conclusion of the preliminary budget, so we'll bring in that next level of data, kind of each month going forward, but.
Thank you, Dr. Penn. One thing I want to circle back on, because it's, I want to make sure everybody heard this, our tax rate is going down, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect, that's what.
It's good to emphasize that, thank you.
That's right, exactly. We need to emphasize that. That's what, a lot of people heard that, and I want to make for sure that everybody.
It should go down at least, at least eight cents.
Perfect, okay.
Property values go up.
Yes, exactly.
Values are going up.
Yeah.
That's another discussion.
Appreciate the tax rate going.
Tax rate is going down.
Tax rate is going down. Also, Mr. Linker, Mr. Cavender, and Mr. Bridges, y'all serve on our Finance Committee now. Thank you all for the work that y'all have done with Dr. Penn and team on this. Some of the things that y'all discuss in there, you get to bring up tonight to us. So very much appreciate that and looking out for the community there. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so the 305 expense-wise includes the board-approved salary adjustments that we made last month.
Yes, and that that would account for if you spent every dollar allocated, every position was filled the entire year, all those things, yeah.
Yeah.
And and a number of of other things that we've got some safeguards built in for. So yes, that would be spending everything.
So glad tax rate's going down and salaries were, continue to work or going up.
And call your legislator.
And call your legislator.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Penn.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Moving along, we are now at 7C. Dr. Ferguson, you will give us a report on student enrollment.
Yeah, so this is always a little bit of an interesting time because students are withdrawing, enrolling. We have some kids that are sitting basically kind of in the queue because maybe shot records or something's not complete within registration, but we go ahead and start tracking those numbers. So 26,471 students for total enrollment, with 2,744 of them being from across the district that are sitting in kind of a pending area. So that's all the, across all of our elementaries, middle school, and high school settings. So parents, please make sure we get all those documents in so we can get our kiddos registered. I will bring up to July 19th is a key date, so making sure that our students are registered for transportation purposes. Last year, looking back, communication went out way too late, and we want to make sure that we've, we are prepped and ready to go. So our transportation team is already working on systems and structures. So July 19th, they will close the gate and they will start working on arrival and our departure times for students. And then you're going to start seeing buses making their way through Prosper ISD because our drivers will be driving their routes. And that also helps us if we need additional drivers to make those adjustments early versus school has started. And then we'll start routing kids past that July 19th date as soon as we can so that we can hopefully get bus transportation set up and ready to go. But we're going to do 100 times better than we did last year.
So 30 days from today, people need to have that done.
Yes, sir.
So 30 days, everyone. Okay, let's see here. Moving along, the administration will provide a report on the 2019 construction projects. Bond 2019 construction projects, I should say. Looks great. You know, our our facilities here in Prosper truly are absolutely first-class. So thank you, Huckabee. Thank you, Pogue, for all of y'all's help and and everything that y'all do for us there. We now sit roughly 50 days out, maybe 50 days exactly from the start of school. We're still on pace with everything. I know that we're opening up a lot of things. Got a thumbs up from Roby, so okay, feeling good about it then. All right, thank you all. Let's see here, any questions, anything of that nature from anyone? Okay. Moving along, we are now on letter E. Long-range planning committee will provide a report and recommendation for future building projects. Excited on this one.
I cannot say thank you enough to the Long Range Planning Committee for the countless hours, three different sessions, over three hours long, digging into a lot of detail and a lot of information about Prosper ISD. And this group stayed committed, focused, and really centered on kids and what was going to be best for future for our kids. So truly appreciate that. If you served on the Long Range Planning Committee as a parent, community member, staff member, or board member, please stand so that we can recognize you for the important Thank you to each and every one of you and those who can't be with us tonight. A special thanks, too, to Dr. Eddie Colson with Into Learning, who guided our committee over the past month. He served in education for over 30 years and served as a superintendent in College Station ISD. He's led dozens of districts through strategic and long-range planning, and he was a valuable resource to keep our meetings on track and on target. He freed up our staff to be in the work with our parents, which I appreciated, being able to sit down, and I know so many of our other staff members did as well, to be able to sit at tables and actually connect with our parents and community members. And it was a great way to make sure and ensure that every voice was truly heard. The Long Range Planning Committee, our work, the center of it, and I told the committee the last time that we met, this is about our kids. It's about our kids that are here today, and it's about our kids for the future, and it's very important work that we're doing. And we want to provide the best opportunities and the best elite facilities that are world-class with the best teachers and staff possible. The Prosper community set the standard for this long ago and excellence every day in every way. As one of the fastest-growing school districts in the state that attracts more than 3,000 new students each year, we must continually evaluate our facilities and support systems to determine if our learning and equipment and infrastructure are equipped to best support the future of our growing student population. To assist us in this effort, we rely on input from members of the Long Range Planning Committee. The Long Range Planning Committee helps us study and prioritize the facility needs of the school district and assists us in providing recommendations to the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees on possible future building projects. The Long Range Planning Committee is invaluable to the planning process because it allows the district to hear from and incorporate many different perspectives from people in the community. For long-range planning, we need to take, and we did take a look at what has actually happened in the district. And I want to point out a few things. $7.22 million budget back in 2002, and in 2020 to a $250 million budget. Things have happened quickly in this small district that is definitely on the boom. And you can see the multiple things that we were adding in, and all of those additions were facilities, but also programming and opportunities for each of the students that we serve. And every time that we open a facility, we have to remember, too, we're opening up opportunities for parents and family members, community members to be able to volunteer and connect with the campus, but also for our staff to take that next step in their career. So our schools represent so much more than just a building. If you'll remember, we had a presentation about the status of the 2019 bond back in March, and it came with an 85% voter approval. At that time, it was only one proposition. You did not have to have multiple propositions based on the law. Currently, at that time, things have changed. And so with Bond 2019, New Schools for Growth, you could see that we ended and where we have gone and what we've been able to accomplish and what we've completed, and then the projects that are actually in process. Please note that if there's an asterisk, there was an overlap between the 2008 bond, which was a $710 million bond, to the 2019 bond. One thing I want to point out, our kids come first and they continue to come first as they should. And so with that, we had to push several of the projects that were sitting in the 2019 bond, and that would be the Nautatorium, as well as our administrative building, and then the Performing Arts Center. And then the things that we have been able to do as far as renovations, any kind of capital improvements, and you can see the money that's been expended in that area. Things to know, we have six central office. I think I'm fighting you on moving. Okay, so we had a facilities assessment as we were looking at of all of our facilities, and those were things that were incorporated into the thinking and the presentation and information for the long-range planning, because as our district continues to grow, it also ages, and that's something that we have to keep our finger on the pulse of. So currently, right now, we have six central office staff portables, so six portables in order to be able to house, and then we also have leased space that the board approved for us to be able to house those individuals that are supporting each of our campuses. Growing by 3,300 students during the 21-22 school year, and currently, we have 128 portable classroom on all of our campuses. That's something that I know that our community is well aware of, because any of our schools that you drive by, typically you see a portable, or sometimes referred to as a luxury town home by some of our elementary principals. 336 new faculty and staff positions in the 22-23 school year. One of our staples in the district has been Rucker Elementary, which was originally our Prosper Elementary back when the school district was extremely small. It's now 29 years old, and the administration building that we're sitting in currently that the air has finally caught up with us is 60 years old, and I think we felt it by way of the AC and the space. So our facilities that are in need of modernization or refresh, Administration Baker Elementary, built in 2007, Cockrell Elementary, 2010, Folsom, 2004, Light Farms, 2015, Rucker Elementary, 1994, Reynolds Middle School, so 2000 and then 2010 with a refresh and expand, Rogers Middle School, 2008 build, and then Prosper High School with the 2009 build. Some of the parents on the Long Range Planning Committee that I was sitting with, they asked a very good question. They said, well, Light Farms doesn't seem like it needs anything. And that is a huge credit to our school boards and the great quality of the facilities that we have built year after year. We may not need that refresh or renovation immediately at Light Farms, but we will eventually need HVAC. We will eventually need painting, and we will need carpet. There will need to be things. So we're planning for many, many years out when we're looking at this. It doesn't mean that it's immediately going to happen. So we're really looking at what is the need well into the future. And then our demographics, you can see we're in competition for high growth, not that we want to be in this competition, but we continue to to be. And Dr. or Mr. Bob Templeton came from Zonda Demographics, who we work with, who does quarterly updates for us, and he actually walked the committee through all of the projected growth and what we were, would be facing within Prosper ISD. And as we talk about that growth, we actually refer to it many times as hypersonic or hypergrowth. This is very unheard of in a school district that is growing at the rate that we are growing. If you stop and think about Prosper High School before Walnut Grove opens, we have 3,700 students. Most small towns in the state of Texas don't even have 3,700 as a population within their given city or town. And we have that housed under 600, almost 600,000 square feet of a facility, and that's a student population. So think about that Mr. Jones is running a small town in the state of Texas every single day at Prosper High School, which is kind of unheard of, and our students keep coming, which gives us opportunities that we need to be able to put in front of our kids. So we embrace that opportunity for growth to make us better. And so this is our 10-year forecast. When you look at our growth in Prosper ISD, and you can see by what's highlighted there, you can see where that bubble of growth, and then you have to think about those students, not just in the current year or grade level that they're in, but those students then as they continue to grow year after year, all the way until 12th grade. And then here's an example of why we have to be looking forward and really have to be planning, because if you'll look, our graph continues to go up and escalate at a high level. And so that's where the Long Range Planning Committee comes in key to our work moving forward. So we're drawing to the near end of our 2019 bond, and it was time to bring our community back together to look at what we could expect for the next five to 10 years or all the way out to build out for Prosper ISD. And so we had to look at that process, and we certainly want our parents alongside, as well as our community members and staff, to really bring this recommendation to us today. And now I'm going to be finished talking because we have a very special guest with us tonight. And Amy, I want to make sure I even looked up how to say your last name because I've been butchering it, I think, so please correct me. Amy Gorgaro?
Gorgaro.
Gorgaro, oh, almost so close. She is actually going to come up and speak to you tonight about the Long Range Planning Committee. She's a parent in our district with an eighth grader at Rushing, and I will mention that Cole is actually going to Chicago with the band over at Rushing in December, so shout out to him and to you, Mom. And she also has a senior at PHS for this upcoming school year. Her oldest graduated from PHS in 2022. In addition to being a member of the Superintendent Parent Advisory Council, Amy's been a parent ambassador, a member of the School Health Advisory Committee, a room mom, volunteered for six years total with Reynolds Darlings and PHS Talonettes, is on the board of those boosters, and serves on the PHS Orchestra Booster, and has been an active participant in academic, fine arts, sports, and church activities that her children have been involved with. She's called Texas Home since 2003, Go Texas, Go Big, and Prosper since 2015. Thank you, Amy, for being an active participant in the Long Range Planning Committee and for sharing the committee's recommendation tonight. We are glad you were here.
A long-range planning committee, in this case, a bond planning committee, really comes together to look at the growth of a school district and a community within the context of that community. Prosper ISD is very unique. I've never been in a community where there is as much growth as is happening and is projected to happen and at the rate that it's happening. So anytime you pull a committee together, it's obviously got some staff on it, but the key component of a bond planning committee is the parents and the community members.
The way we were really given information was a very step-by-step process. I felt like everything was really well presented, everything from how the district started out to where we're going and everything in between.
We've been given a lot of information. We've been given a lot of statistics of the number of students that we have currently, the number of students we're expected per the demographers. But I do feel like we got a lot of information to help us make a decision to say, these are the costs that we've experienced to this point, these are the costs that we're expecting in the future, and hope that we can get the, you know, facilities that we need to support the exploding number of students that we have.
As Prosper has grown, the district has done its very best just to stay ahead of that growth, and this bond planning committee has done a great job of looking at what needs to happen.
Our end goal really in all of this is to make sure that every student in Prosper ISD has the same opportunities.
One of the things that I learned from this committee process is how many of our buildings are 10 to 15 years old. And so even though we're building new buildings all the time, those buildings that look just like the brand-new buildings, the same footprint and everything, are already showing some age, and there already is some work that needs to be done.
We are creating a world-class environment as much as we can for this district because it does have so much to offer. I don't want to say it was. I don't want to say it was easy to come to a consensus, but it was very informative. I think the biggest part of it was soaking up all of the different pieces of information, everyone individually making a decision that they thought was right, and then ultimately deferring to the group.
There are lots of things that need to happen in Prosper, not just one, not just two. It's multiple elementary schools, it's multiple middle schools, it's other facilities, it's multiple high schools, and so putting all that together takes some time, and it takes people who understand the rate of growth that is happening in Prosper.
That was a fantastic summary. Dr. Ferguson, members of the board, it is a pleasure to be here tonight to represent the Long Range Planning Committee and present our recommendation to you. My apologies in advance for reading to you, but because I represent a large committee, I wanted to make sure I accurately conveyed our thoughts and findings tonight. First, to be asked to participate in such an important task was an honor. Serving on a board that carefully considers the very critical future of Prosper, this district, and most importantly, its students, is something none of us took lightly. After spending countless hours in this process, I was struck by the monumental task our district leaders face every day to ensure all of our students receive the best opportunities, in the best programs, in the best facilities, second to none. Before I present our recommendation, let me tell you a little bit about the committee. The committee members are a reflection of the district. They are 41 parents of elementary, middle, and high school students, some of whom are here tonight. Some have one child in the district, some have multiple, and some have children who graduated from a Prosper ISD high school. Prosper High School, Rock Hill High School, and Walnut Grove High School attendance zones are all represented. Committee members reside in the east side, central, and west side of the district. The mayor of Salina participated. The committee also included members who serve the town of Prosper and McKinney. Additionally, members represent a variety of professions and are leaders in their industries. In addition to the parents and the community members, we were so fortunate to have district staff there to help in the process. As the information was presented, they answered our questions and allowed us to come to our own conclusions while providing the information we needed to know to make a fully informed and educated decision. All committee members had a voice, an ample time and opportunity to analyze the information, ask questions, thoughtfully listen to each other, and collaborate to determine a plan for our district going forward. We were led in our work by Dr. Eddie Colson, as Dr. Ferguson said, a 30-year educator who has led this type of work in dozens of school districts across the state of Texas. He kept us on track and moving forward while also providing opportunity to discuss topics until we'd reached clarity. His leadership was welcomed. As we navigated the complex task of building a recommendation for the Board of Trustees, that was a consensus of the committee. We thank you, Dr. Colson, for your leadership. It is our duty as a Long Range Planning Committee to make sure our current students and future students have the very best education Prosper can offer, from pre-K through graduation, with the goal to set our students up to be the best-prepared and educated leaders and contributing citizens in their communities as they enter college, trade schools, work, and most importantly, adulthood. We took our roles on this committee very seriously, and we do not make our suggestions lightly tonight. The committee has combed over facts, statistics, growth rates, current challenges, future realities, and needs. We toured one of the oldest schools in Prosper and saw firsthand the limitations that exist impacting students and teachers today. We have carefully considered our town's children, our cherished teachers and staff, the exceptional education we provide and have become known for, and the safety of everyone as we continue to grow the rising future generation blessed to call Prosper home. Our goal as an informed, involved, committed, and knowledgeable group of parents and community members was to bring you a recommendation for a building program agreed upon by the I now present our recommendations for your consideration. As we began the process, we determined our priorities. We desperately need new schools for all ages, all age groups of PISD students to address growth. We must modernize older buildings to accommodate growth while allowing all students district-wide to be able to have the same outstanding opportunities. We must build additional facilities that support campuses. We must have embedded safety and security measures. We must provide technology infrastructure to last into the unknown future and provide flexibility in devices to prepare for the unknown future. And we must buy land for building campuses. Our recommendation maintains the high standards demanded by our community, the excellence that Prosper has been known for. We have high expectations for our district, and our children deserve the best opportunities we can provide. We addressed projected growth with our recommendation taking us through the next five to seven years. Our recommendation was conservative, measured, and informed. As the past has taught us, we need to plan for the unexpected, including the seemingly impossible prediction for future inflation and prices for building costs. We wanted the Goldilocks number, not too big, not too small, but just right. Of course, the goal is always to come in under budget. Our recommendation allows flexibility and responsiveness to growth patterns, with a timeframe providing enough bond capacity to renovate our older campuses and address the need for new facilities. It is important for everyone to note that this recommendation does not cause a tax rate increase. With safety and security embedded in all our projects, we knew we needed to begin with the new buildings necessary to address the hypergrowth our school district is experiencing. After hearing from the demographer and relying on our own experience as residents of Prosper ISD, it became clear to the committee that we need more schools to ensure not only current students experience the best facilities, but that we're ready for the tens of thousands of new students that have been projected to enroll in our schools in the next five to 10 years. The committee knows the predictions are based on data, and we also know it isn't an exact science and conditions can change. We believe these recommendations provide a net flexibility to address changing conditions, building designs, and growth. We also believe these recommendations are fiscally conservative and protect the interests of property owners in the district. Now, what you've been waiting for. We recommend building six elementaries, our second early childhood school, two middle schools, a completed high school, number four. Note that this cost is lower because our 2019 bond covers a portion of the expense. High school, number five, a second stadium that seats 8,000 spectators, an administrative building and professional learning center, and an outdoor learning experience. The total cost for these items is $1,870,811,532. Our recommendation includes modernizing eight of our campuses, including Baker, Cockrell, Folsom, Light Farms, and Rucker Elementary Schools, Reynolds and Rogers Middle Schools, and Prosper High School. We would also expand four campuses, including Rucker, Reynolds, Rogers, and Prosper High School. We would also update our current administrative building for alternative use and would renovate turf and tracks throughout the district. Total cost for these items is $425,415,725. Our recommendation includes reinforced safety and security measures and upgrades in the amount of $32 million. I'll let you continue reading that number. We also would purchase 170 acres of land at $10 a square foot, which would be two sites for two middle schools and six elementary schools, costing just over $78 million. We would also purchase additional buses and vehicles totaling $35 million. We recommend upgrading technology infrastructure and devices for students, teachers, and staff. Total cost for these is $240 million. No need to get out your calculators, the committee has done the math for you. On behalf of the Long Range Planning Committee, we overwhelmingly ask you to please support our recommendation for $2,681,989,233 to be considered in a bond election for this coming November. We understand this is a staggering number. We took careful consideration and deliberation to reach this conclusion, and as a committee, we overwhelmingly agree this is the right move for Prosper at this time. We must prepare for the record-breaking growth we will continue to face over the coming years. Strong schools build strong communities, and we are committed to the need to continue to invest in our children. Approving this bond is the only way we can move forward to build the facilities we need to support our children. I thank you for carefully considering the time and effort put forth to create our recommendation and our thoughtful proposal of the needed funds to meet the demands of our growth. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
A nominal job presenting.
Excellent presentation.
Yeah, a big shout out to the community. Dr. Ferguson, I echo your comments, just the level of gratitude for the nine-plus hours that were given by the community for some very daunting, thought-provoking tasks, so.
Okay, again, thank y'all. We will be considering that and speaking more over the next month or two on that, so. Okay, 2.6. Wow, okay. Let's see here, moving along into action items. First action item this evening, 8A, consideration and possible action regarding the GMP for Pete Mosley Middle School.
Members of the board, I want to start off tonight, I'm going to turn it over here in just a minute, to Robie Bloodsoe, Brandon Colquit, and James Pearson from Pogue Construction are here, and they're going to speak to this project. I just wanted to clarify the ask tonight and then give you a little information about the GMP. And so the GMP that we're bringing forward tonight and asking for approval for is $106,297,582. I never thought I would say that was a good price, but I'm here to tell you, I'm pleased with the work that's been done here in the midst of a crazy market and the inflation that we've experienced. I think we're seeing some encouraging signs, I'll let Brandon and the guys speak to. But I wanted to also point out to you that this number is likely going to come down here pretty quickly, but I just wanted to explain why that is. I want to thank the town of Prosper for working with us, expedited some things on this project as we moved quickly, but one of the issues with this site is that it is right at the intersection of Teal and Parven Road, and Parven is the dividing line between the town of Prosper and the city of Salina. It also needs to be a major east-west thoroughfare. If you've driven it anytime recently or ever, you know that it's not exactly awesome. And that road has been a point of consternation for many years for many folks. Right now, you can't even drive down it, because they are laying asphalt over it, there's going to be two lanes of asphalt laid. And so as a part of this project, we were trying to figure out what the road design would be of Teal in between, what is Mosley Middle School, and what eventually will be a high school site for us, and then how it ties into Parven Road, and that was some difficult calculus to come up with, working between the city of Salina and the town of Prosper and what our project required. And so what we have in the bid proposal is four lanes of concrete. Basically, we maxed out the bid, thinking we might be forced to build all of this, and it appears after meeting with the town of Prosper and the city of Salina, because they're just pouring two lanes of asphalt currently, we're going to be responsible for some turn lanes, but there's about 1,000 feet of concrete that's going to come out of this number, based on their recommendations and what they're doing with the road right now. So there's going to be some substantial savings for that. I'll be happy to report that back to you once we have it, but wanted you to know, we were under the gun to get the bid done, and so we felt the way to do it was to bid the whole thing and then come back, and we're working on getting what that delta would be. So I believe this number is going to come down, but that has all been happening rapid fire in between the time we were able to get the bid and bring this to you. And so the ask is for the 106-297-582, but again, I think we'll have an update soon of some savings we'll see there. With that, I'd like Brandon and Robie to come up and give you a little more information about this particular job.
Thanks, Dr. Bradley.
Dr. Ferguson, board members, it's an honor to be here tonight. Just to expand a little bit on what Dr. Bradley just touched on, this was an extremely favorable process from us in terms of how this project was bid out and how the market reacted to the project. Just in terms of sheer numbers of proposals we received from our trade partners on bid day, we received almost 300 total bids on this project, 282 to be exact, which anytime you get that kind of competition in the marketplace, number one, it says that the market wants to work in Prosper ISD, but number two, it's a good way for us to gauge and make sure that we're getting the best value for the district. So you'll see our GMP information looks a little bit different tonight than it has in the past. We do have middle school, number five, which was bid on September the 27th of 2022. There for comparison, while these projects are not exactly the same, I was happy with the fact that the number at the bottom was not as significantly different as we expect. We actually came in about $6 million under what we had originally thought this project was going to cost in the early budgetary phases. Once again, the projects are not exactly the same. There are some scope changes in the projects that cause them to be a little different. Based on subsoil water, we do have agrocast piles on this project instead of piers, similar to what we're doing on Walnut Grove High School. The subgrade prep for the athletics on this project was less invasive than it was on middle school, number five, so you'll see that that cost is down a little bit as well. Overall, the site in general, other than the fact that water was present, was more favorable than the site for Jones Middle School. Secondly, while the floor plans, as far as layout, are similar, the buildings are a little bit different. Because of the geographical location of Jones Middle School and its close proximity to Rock Hill High School, a lot of the more robust masonry features that you see on Rock Hill or on Jones, there's some different facade materials that were used on this building that were able to be more cost-effective while having a great look. So that, you're going to see some fluctuations in pricings, but overall, based on what we saw from the market on bid day and the slight increase in the overall cost, we felt like we were happy with it. And with that, I'm going to let Robie just speak to kind of what we think that could mean in terms of market conditions.
Awesome, thank you, Brandon. So last month, we were here with, talking about inflation, and I'm here to tell you tonight, inflation is still there, but that being said, this bid really was encouraging from the standpoint of where the market is overall. I'm not going to say that it has gone away, not by any means, but we are seeing a leveling in the market. We did anticipate this with what we saw for the last two years with COVID, with the rapid inflation on the heels of COVID. Really, we're seeing the market get back to normal is really what we're seeing, and this bid, I think, is really proving that out. We've seen that elsewhere on a few other projects that we've bid this year in the same timeframe, where we do feel like the market is starting to level back out to those normal ranges. Another contributing factor, just as the market as a whole, that I think was a driver in us getting so many bids, is we're seeing some of the private work starting to dry up a little bit, and what that's causing is a lot of those subcontractors that focus on the private market are getting into the public sector, which is part of the reason we got as good a coverage as we did. So it's favorable for us in this scenario. More competition, obviously, creates better pricing, so good news on all fronts. With that, I'll open it up for any questions. All right, we have an action item in front of us. Questions for gentlemen at Pogue, anyone? All right, hearing none, I will, the number of 106-297-592, does anyone have a motion for that?
I have a different number.
106. Did I write that down wrong, Dr. Bradley? You step back real quick. The number that you had. Okay, yeah, I was slightly off on that. 106-162-582. Is that the correct number?
That's what was on the GMP on the post sheet.
If you say it is, it is definitely the number.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, sir, my bad.
Okay. Then I will entertain a number for Mr. Link, or the number that you had just now.
I move that we approve the guaranteed maximum price for Pete Mosley Middle School at $106,162,582.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Sir, a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Any discussion on that?
Just real quickly, so the change that was referenced on the roadway, will that come back to the board? Y'all going to roll it into contingency? Kind of what's the thought there on management of that, Dr. Bradley?
We can bring it back to, in the past, we just rolled that back into contingency and then settled up. We can bring it back to, in the past, we just rolled that back into contingency and then settled it up at the end. Just if we have any unforeseen circumstances, but I can certainly provide that number back to.
Yeah, it's fine, just curious, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? It's all seven of us, all right. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item 8B, consideration and possible action regarding an update to Highland Lakes Offsite Water and Sewer Development Agreement.
If there's any questions, I'll try to entertain those, but it's just, you have the information in your package, just want to remind you that in October of '21, we entered into this agreement with Highland Lakes. We have a middle school site and a high school site right here. And the choice the board made back in October of '21 was to go ahead and and fund our portion of this at $2,021 instead of $2,028 or $2,030, whenever we get ready to construct a middle school and a high school over there. As part of that agreement, we knew the project was not going to bid at that time. Those were cost estimates provided to us. The project has now been bid, and the resulting delta is that we would owe $159,898 more dollars. And while I'm not excited about that, I still do believe that it is the right thing to do to pay today's dollars for this, instead of waiting for six more years of escalation to go get this. And so this essentially answers every, you know, we've been reluctant to build somewhat on the east side of the district because there's not been any infrastructure there. And so this would answer everything but the major road. So it puts the district, I believe, in an advantageous position when we're ready to move on that side.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bradley. Any questions for Dr. Bradley? Hearing none, is there a motion for an additional $159,898.79?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I move that we approve the update to Highland Lakes Offsite Water and Sewer Development Agreement for an additional amount of $159,898.79.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us, none opposed, motion passes as well. All right, thank you, Dr. Bradley. Moving along to item 8C. Consideration and possible action regarding small zoning adjustment to Light Farms and Liliana Elementaries.
Yes, so what you have up on the screen right now is the current elementary zoning. And what we're asking the board tonight is, this is what the current elementary breakdown would look like under the map that we currently have. And you see that Light Farms is just over 1,000 students projected for next year. And our numbers don't reflect that at this moment and with enrollment, but we know it will probably go up some as we move forward. And so this little portion, that is, you can see a little bit different color in the purple zone there that is Light Farms. This is actually just west of Preston Road and just north of Frontier Parkway. Today, there are some apartments named Avia Grove Apartments that are on the ground and have some residents in them. It's not complete, but there are some residents there. There's also a multi-story apartment complex being constructed there that you can see. It's kind of hard to see the single-story ones, they're backed down a little bit to the west. But you can see the multi-story ones being built. This zone would just contain those multifamily residences. As of the end of this school year, we only had three elementary students who resided in this zone. Again, most of this housing, I think, is transitional housing for most of our families move in, waiting for their house to be done. So we only had three students that resided there. However, we know in the future, there's going to be substantially more students that would reside there. And right now, those students either would have to be, if they go to Light Farms, they would have to be bused to Light Farms. There's no way to walk to Light Farms. And so what we're asking for is this small adjustment. Again, that would only impact, no one who lives there now, other than those three kids, have ever gone anywhere else.
Can you say that the earliest they could have been in those homes was March?
Yes.
So only a couple months of school.
It is just, yes, ma'am, it is just open. So they could not have been there the whole year or anything like that. And you can see, just by making this adjustment, to go from 1,000, look at the Light Farms number, right now it's 1,012. The demographers anticipating that doing this would only affect 24 kids next year would pull Light Farms down to 988. Liliana only goes up to 678, brand-new elementary, but clearly 24 more students we can handle there without much issue. The problem, and I spoke with the demographer about this, you see that the continuing number of Light Farms there, how it doesn't go up very much on either one. The problem is, they don't know how to project how many kids are going to live in this multifamily development. That one's just, it's hard to know because they don't have all the data yet from the city of Salina. And so what we're asking tonight is just if the board would consider rezoning this small little portion here. Again, we would personally contact these kids that are affected. But it's not very many, like say, at the max, would be three. And so that is the request tonight, to move that small little portion out of Light Farms and into Liliana.
All right, real quick, remind me who's on zoning committee, Ms. Dixon, Mr. Dial, who else? Zoning committee? The new one?
We only had six members, so that's fine.
That's right, okay.
Just the two of them for a little bit.
Thank y'all for that, on that. Yes, and thank you for keeping me honest on that. Thank you all for the work that y'all did. Let's see here, as well as administration, Dr. Bradley, thank you for that. This has been presented by administration, any questions on this, by anyone? All right.
No, answered all questions. I just want to say thank you again. You had spoken to what I was about to ask, if those three students would be contacted personally, so I appreciate that. They may be in homes by now, so.
Very true. All right, does anyone have a motion for consideration on this?
I move to approve the zoning adjustment to the Light Farms Elementary and Liliana Elementary, so.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon, is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion? No? Take a vote in favor, four? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that is all of us, none opposed, that motion passes. Moving along into the consent agenda portion, we've got several things listed out there. Approval of the prior two meetings that we had. Thank you, Mr. Dial, for your work on that, keeping everything set there for us. We have some cleanup of board operating procedures and board policy to make sure that those don't contradict, come together. We also have some purchasing of network cables as well. Any, any questions by anyone? Okay, consent agenda, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, four? That's all, seven of us, none opposed, the consent agenda passes. Okay, that brings us to, I believe, closed session. Dr. Ferguson, am I missing anything there?
Superintendent Report, so just want to very briefly hit on innovative learning, which is goal one. And our leaders were able to go to a retreat, it was highly successful. Got amazing feedback from our leaders in the way that they felt like they'd report into and really understanding or better understanding the direction of the district and where we are going as we move into the 23, 24 school year. And then, of course, graduation, this is the Super Bowl of education. And I want to say thank you to each of our board members for sitting on stage, watching each of those graduates come across the stage. There is no greater joy than this moment. So certainly, the end game for us in public ed. And then, just to remind everybody, we still have a ton of summer learning opportunities. I know that Dr. Penn brought that up, as far as talking about some of the funding mechanisms that we have. But our staff and our students are still going strong. If anybody has been in a strength and conditioning, possible car line, trying to drop their child off, you know that it is in full effect. And then we have multiple athletic camps going on. We have summer school for intervention for our second language kids, as well as special education. We also have camp invention and a lot of other amazing opportunities for our students to continue to engage and our parents to be able to provide those opportunities to our kids. So we're very thankful for our staff, that they are willing to put in and give even more all the way through the summer.
Absolutely, all right. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. We will now go into closed session. We will now go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Sections 551, .071, .072, .074, and .076. When we are finished with our closed discussion, we will return to open session to take any action that needs to be taken. The time is now 8:46 PM. Thank you all.
The time is now ten oh eight PM. We are back in regular session. We have, if I can get to it real quick. Let's see here. Item twelve A. Let's see here. Employment. New employees for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year as seen in the attachment. Any questions by anybody? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the resignations and hires?
Just the hires.
Just the hires.
I move that the board approve the hiring of all contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Is there a second? I'll say go. Thank you, Mr. Ben Wolf. Discussion. All right. All in favor? There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us. No opposed. The motion passes. That is it for this evening. I now close the regular meeting at ten oh nine PM. Thank you all very much.